The battery?
I was rather hopeful that this was Providence telling me that I had the day off, that I get to take a pass today.
Oh.
I, I actually.
It's like.
I, I was actually gonna ask you to tap dance, Scott, but.
That could end in disaster.
Technology is a wonderful thing when it works.
Well, while we're waiting for the new members of the board, you're gonna see some things when we begin our presentation, where I'm gonna be demonstrating some savings to the taxpayer. And I wanted to let you guys know the context of that. Several years ago, when I came on board, Tom Alessio and I did a workforce study, a skillset study, and a, and a basic work environment kind of analysis. And we determined that the county had been outsourcing a lot of things in the past via architect, you know, we, we would have an architect on retainer and they would hire the, the subcontractors in, et cetera. So, Mr. Alessio and I kinda did an evaluation and determined that we were probably capable of doing a lot more with our in-house staff. So, the board gave us permission to try that out. And as we will demonstrate shortly, it's worked quite nicely. So, I just wanted to give you that context. We just kinda backed off on outsourcing a lot of stuff that, that just didn't need to go out of, didn't need to leave here. So, we've gotten a lot of things done on wages without paying all the extravagant costs of outsourcing. We can go to the next page if you want to. Alright, so estimated revenues. So, basically, on, on this budget request, what you're seeing is an estimated, the estimated revenue that's gonna come in from parking lot fees. We went to, we went to the state, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Human Services, and et cetera. And so, we get some revenue stream from that. The requested expense reflects a rather large budget. For the new members, again, the General Services Department also handles the budget for the fleet of automobiles at the Sheriff's Department. We don't handle the fleet at Public Works, but we do handle some other things too. So, our budget reflects things that are, that are actually expenses that are settled in other departments, but are ta, but we manage the budget for it. So, that's why it's a large number like that. We have one hundred four full-time employees, and we're running pretty lean right now, to tell you the truth. We really don't have much by way of a bench. Every one of our employees is, is on their game every day, doing the best they can. And so, we don't have a lot of, we don't have any slack regarding FTEs. We're, we're at a good, solid number. We don't need any more, but it'd be hard to get by with any less. Next. This pretty much speaks for itself. It, that, that's an explanation of the revenue stream. The elimination of that, we got a grant last year for eighty-four thousand dollars for the VAV system. VAV is the Variable Airflow Volume System that we're putting currently, the administration building. We have a big boiler in the basement, and we burn a lot of natural gas and boil a lot of water to make steam and et cetera. It's not a very reliable system. It's certainly not cost-effective, and it burns a lot of gas and creates carbon emissions. So, we have, we are in the process of replacing that. The federal government offered us three rounds of grants, and it worked perfectly for us because we have three floors in this building. So, we were renew, we were installing the VAV system on the third, then the second, and then the first floor. We've done the first two. The federal government pulled back on that. It, it was an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. And although that was out there and kinda promised to people like us, that's been pulled back and retracted, and that's reflected in that eighty-five thousand dollars that we had last year, but will not appear in this year's budget.
So, are we in a weird limbo, or can we?
We're just waiting for the feds.
So, we can't oper, I mean, we're not operating our two systems? Like, you, you?
We're operating, we, Mr. Alessio?
It's not that.
The VAV system is functional on third and second, is that correct?
Yes.
There we go. My consulting team says that I was right about that one. So, we're, we're not gonna do the first floor. I mean, we're gonna do it, but that'll be on next year's, that'll, that'll be on next year's thing. And that is a real deal. The VAV system saves a lot of money. It gets rid of this boiler and all the inconsistencies that come with boiling water and running steam through a bunch of pipes. The VAV system also allows us to control the environment, the temperature and its, and the airflow in small contained places. So, we can adjust it down to one person's office, pretty much, once we get this in place. And it's ba, and it operates on electricity as opposed to burning natural gas. Next, please? Okay, so, this, I'm not gonna read through this thing. You guys can read. I know you have it in front of you. If you, if you have any questions about this, I'd be happy to get someone else to answer it for you. Okey-dokey, on to decision packages. So, if you look at the decision package thing, the building tech at nineteen fourteen Carpenter is for a partial year. That reflects the fact that we just opened a brand-new facility down there, and it's a, it's a, it's a high-traffic facility with a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot going on down there. And we obviously needed a full-time employee because we added a building, we needed a full-time employee. So, that reflects the partial expense. You see the complete VAV system on first floor, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. That's the same for the second, but with the first floor was, was the one we got done prior to this reporting period. If you have questions about the jail video management system, I would gladly let Mr. Ost, who really kinda runs that whole outfit, I'd be happy to let him answer questions if you have any about that. The AC units at nineteen oh seven Carpenter, which is our health and human services building, these things just time out after a while. They have a lot of electricity running through them. There's a lot of temperature differentials running through them. They have fans and moving parts. They're exposed to the weather and et cetera. So, they just have a life cycle, and this one came to its end, and we replaced it. Now, I'm happy to tell you, so, with General Services, we have to turn our budget in at a certain deadline, and then there's a space between when we turn these things in, and stuff keeps happening, right? So, on the redesign on the treasurer's office, that was in the budget, or it's being, it's placed in the decision package thing. Tom Alessio and I went back down to the treasurer's office, and we re-walked it and re-walked it and went through everything with a fine-tooth comb. And there were some significant things that we found that we, we found a way to, to work around them, or whatever. That redesign, the treasurer's office decision package, thanks to Mr. Alessio, has been reduced by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, we're only gonna ask for a hundred thousand now in that, in that decision package. We, Tom, Tom found a way to scrub a quarter of a million out of that, and Mary Wells was happy with that. She's okay with it and pleased with what we're doing. So, we're in there doing the work right now, and it's gonna cost a quarter of a million dollars less than what we had anticipated in for, in the first place. Any questions on our decision packages? Okay, on to recent accomplishments. You know, I gotta brag on General Services. Our frontline management team and our decision-makers and our workers in this department are peerless. I would put 'em up against anybody. They come to work every day. They bring their game. They're thinking all the time, trying to figure out ways to save money for the taxpayer, to build efficiencies and economies into the process. And I'm, I'm very proud of our department, that the folks that work in our department take it very seriously. We're up to six electric vehicles now, and with plans to do more. We're having conversations, live conversations about EV charging centers and where we're gonna place those, and the questions we're gonna have for the board about, you know, if someone's driving an EV home, do we set 'em up with a charging station at their house? I mean, we've got a lot of things built in around this. So, we'll be having those conversations moving forward. I think everyone in the county is pretty proud of the Life Services Center. It's gonna, it's gonna do a lot of good things in that, in that part of our community. And I think that it, it probably saved a few lives along the way. And that's always worth doing. Mr. Alessio reports to me that they have finished the demolition on the Global Neighbors piece, which is nineteen oh one Carp, nineteen hundred Carpenter, which is the other half of the nineteen fourteen Life Services Center. It'll be called Global Neighbors, and it's gonna be a refugee welcoming center to help bring wraparound services to people that are new to our country and new to our community, so that we can help them find work. We can help integrate their children into the school system and all the other things that, that one would need to be, to be oriented properly for life in our community, which makes a lot of sense, if you ask me. We're forever building office spaces. We finished a new lactation room with Justice Center. We've got one upstairs that we did. We have replaced eighty percent of all the light fixtures in Polk County buildings. We have, for the new members, we have twenty-seven standard buildings, of which this is one, the courthouses, the judicial services. We have seven community centers where we serve meals and, and provide, provide a place to go for senior citizens and other people. So, we have twenty-seven buildings plus seventy-five single-family dwellings. A couple of them are more like apartments for persons living with intellectual disabilities. And we have, we, we're up and running with that thing and providing a great service to our community, I think. So, we rebuilt the shooting center, Northside Senior Center. Oh, yeah. Day before yesterday, less than thirty-six hours ago, the solar panels that are on top of our roof here have gone live. We, we have the, we have the, the double metering system set up, and so, all the lights that are on today in the building are brought to you by solar panels. I'm pretty proud of that. The Northside Senior Center is running off of that. And if any of you have questions about savings or any of that, or any of the other things incorporated with our solar program, I can tell you all about it. It's a pretty good thing, and it's pretty exciting, actually.
Scott, are you on the stage working at River Place now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Six thousand two hundred fifty panels will, will be adorning that roof soon. If you go down there, you'll see the cones and the rope. They've got it all roped.
I've noticed.
Right. They're doing the installations even in this freezing cold weather. I mean, those guys are pretty hardcore.
Yeah.
So, we're on schedule and on budget, and it's all working out quite nicely.
Good.
Okay, so, we can flip now to the natural gas piece, the little thing.
Before you go forward, can you go back one?
Yes, ma'am.
You asked if I had any questions, and I didn't at the time, but I, I actually do. I just, can you explain a little bit more about the jail video management system, like where we are? I mean, that's our highest expense, right? What, what we're looking to improve?
So, these decision packages, basically, what happens supervisor, all trainer, is General Services, we have budgets, as you can see now, for the Sheriff's Department, the fleets, and all these other things, right? So, we, we, everyone puts together their wish list and sends it to General Services. We get to be the ignominious people that get to cut other people's budgets. And so, we try to find ways to, to trim things down. When it looks to us it's really necessary, but if there's not space in the operations budget or the CIP budget for it, we place it in the decision package thing, so the board gets to decide whether or not that money is spent. And so, I'll let Brian explain that to you.
At the jail, we have over four hundred cameras. Oh, I'm Brian Ost. I'm the Building Engineering Manager, in charge of HVAC, cameras, card access. At the jail, we have over four hundred cameras, and the video management system takes all the camera feeds, records them, puts them on displays all over the building. When, when somebody hits an intercom, in master control, it pops up the video, so they can see what's going on. The, the video management system we have is over fif, it's over ten years old, and, you know, it's a computer system, basically. You know, computer systems, it's like dog years. So, if it's ten years old, it's like seventy years old on anything else. So...
So, I can, I can add a little bit. So, the system, the system itself is end of life. And I should say, I can't say enough good things about General Services and the job they do in maintaining the buildings and our facilities. This is one of those things. They manage and support the video system at the jail. It is critical to the functionality, the operations, and safety at the jail. All the flow, all the movement is controlled by those cameras. So, for instance, no individuals have keys. Everything is controlled by master control, so the entire operation is managed by these cameras. Then, obviously, for, for liability litigation purposes too, that they, they play a critical role. But again, it's in the General Services budget because they manage and support that system. It is end of life.
And they also make recordings for court proceedings, and we're experiencing major difficulties with making the recordings. The system is just dying.
Those recordings are often entered into evidence. We don't have, law enforcement is, is at a deficit because they don't have that evidence.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Scott.
Don't apologize for that. Mr. County Administrator, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Alright, so.
Talk about this last bullet, the nat, natural gas savings.
Yes, sir. That's right there. It's up on the screen right now.
Oh, okay.
I'll explain that to you. So, so, the board gave me permission last year. It was in about March or so. I was doing a survey, first of all, to the new supervisors. I was given a mandate when I was hired on to, because we have so much going on in our department, with each and every step we take or new project, the first thing Mr. Alessio and I do is a cost analysis. And we compare what the projected costs, and other people often project those costs. It's not typically us that do it. But Tom and I peel it apart, and our whole entire goal is to make sure the taxpayer gets the most economy from everything we do, energy, I mean, efficiency, economies, and all that. So, I got to looking at, you know, we burn natural gas to heat our buildings. That's gonna be phased out over many years because there are better ways to do it, but it takes time. So, I was looking things over, and last March or so, I found out that we were buying gas one time for the whole year. And whatever that price was, that's what the price was all year long. When we got billed for gas, it would be billed at that, at that number. That, and it's priced per decathrom is what it's called. So, you can multiply how many decathroms it needs to, we need to heat a building, and multiply that by the dollars and so on and so forth. I got to looking at this smart portfolio system. Instead of buying gas one time, I get forty-eight chances during the course of a year to review where gas, where, where gas prices are, and it fluctuates a lot with all the different things. So, we now buy gas a whole lot during the course of the year. I have a broker that does this at Constellation, and they're able to buy fractions of a month, or fractions here and there. If the price is high, we buy small. If the price is low, we buy big. And it's just since May. Now, this system is not, this isn't a system to beat the market. It's a system to beat the price that we were paying before, and to find prices that are lower than that on the global natural gas market. Since May, now, this thing proves, is proved out over time. There have been empirical studies about this, and this thing typically saves government entities and, and entities like us eighty-one percent of the time, there is substantial savings. Eighty-one percent. So, that's not a bad bet. So, the board gave me permission to try it on for size. Since May, we've saved sixty-three thousand dollars compared to what we would've been paying at the last fixed-point price that we paid. Now that we're buying gas incrementally on the market, just since May, we've saved sixty-three thousand dollars compared to what we paid at, at comparable gas prices last year, just because we get to play around a little bit with the pricing structure.
Excellent.
It's paying off. So, in the last year, and I've, again, I have to thank Mr. Alessio. We did the, we did the Sally Port at the jail and came in about six hundred thousand dollars lower than the projected cost on that one. We came in on the global, not Global Neighbors, that's up next, but on the Life Services Center, on the side that we're finished now, we came in about two point, two point one million, something like that? We came in about two point one million dollars under the projected cost. And these costs were projected by architectural firms that were engaged in telling us what. So, two point one on that, six hundred on the, six hundred thousand on the Sally Port, and now, we're gonna be saving money on gas. So, I'm happy to report that General Services over the last eighteen months has saved the taxpayer about three million dollars. All, all, all provable, all empirical. It's all logged away and scientific, so.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? If not, again, it's a pleasure to serve the taxpayers of Polk County, and thank you for the opportunity to do so, and we'll try and keep saving money and doing a good job for you. Oh, that thing right there, okay, upcoming opportunities. Well, basically, the Global Neighbor System, we're gonna, we're gonna be talking with the board about EV charging stations. There is a system, we light up the historic courthouse all the time, and there's a, there's a system that can, can do that by computer that we're looking into right now, the, which would be more efficient. Now, we have to send employees into that building and up on the roof and all around, and they change these gels, you know, color gels, and shine lights through them and all this. And it's pretty protracted, and, you know, it's pulling, we, we have to pull, you know, personnel off, and you can't send just one person because that wouldn't be safe. So, we're looking into those things, and we'll be reporting back on them later on. We're continuing to add solar panels now to the, to River Place, but we're gonna be surveying other buildings and open pieces of ground that the board thinks might be good places to install more solar later on. And this VAV system that we're doing and all these other things, we are actively converting away from boiler systems and now to a VAV system, which costs a lot less once it's installed. It's better for the environment, and the taxpayers are gonna realize long-term savings once we get all these things installed. And just as a, just as a, an aside, after, after, we, we're starting to save money right now. But just to give you, you know, a lot, the long view, in thirty years, by year thirty, the, the system savings for our solar program, the way it sits right today, we will be transferring savings of five point two million dollars over to the taxpayer in reduced energy costs. Once, once our solar system is, is up and running, the payback period is only about twelve, thirteen years. And once that's done, then it's, then it's pure savings to the taxpayer. Sir?
No, I was just saying, the lifespan's about thirty years though, too, right?
Yeah, it comes up, right. The good thing about those is they don't, they don't have any moving parts. So, basically, the wear and tear comes from weather and ultraviolet light. And being able to replace or repair those panels is relatively pretty cost-effective compared to when a boiler goes down or when we have major problems with steam pipes and things like that. So, all in all, it's really a more streamlined and cost-effective way to do, to do things.
Scott, were you gonna cover any of the CIP expenses?
Yeah, can we go to the, can we go to those slides?
Yep.
There we are. So, you can read through this yourself if you haven't already done that. It's basically kinda what we do on capital improvement projects. It's kinda the system that we go through to make decisions and et cetera like that. So, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer. But that's pretty straightforward. That's just kinda the process.
So, so, the types of things that end up in a CIP and the process for them ending up in CIP is what?
Well, capital improvement projects are basically purchases of new equipment, major new equipment, purchasing and restoring buildings, re, you know, like the nineteen fourteen project was a capital improvement project. So, it's capital that already exists, that we already have, and rather than neglect it or otherwise, you know, let it lie fallow, we improve upon them. And, and I can let Kerry explain that a little more if, if that's not good enough.
No, I think that's fine. I just wanted, I just wanted to touch on that. And can you tell me why Public Works has a vehicle fleet management system and General Services have a vehicle fleet system? What's the reason for maintaining two vehicle fleet systems?
I'd like to know the answer to that myself, sir.
Okay.
I think that was established by the board decades and decades and decades ago, and I inherited that system. And have, we have had conversations. Tom, Tom might be able to add a little something to that.
I think it's because they have heavy equipment.
Okay, I wonder.
They're the experts on that.
Okay.
It's kinda why that's separated.
Yeah. And do they do their own maintenance and repair of their General Services heavy equipment in?
They do. Rex does it there at Central Maintenance Facility, as well as all of our vehicles too.
And, and how many, how many mechanics maintain your system, your fleet management system?
I, Kerry takes care of all the ordering. I, Kerry takes care of all the ordering.
Okay.
I, I assist her on that. Rex works with me and Rick Corbin as far as when they need serviced.
Okay.
And then CMF performs. And I'm not real sure how many people he uses as typical mechanics to work on them. But that's kind of the system we use.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious as when I heard that they have their own system and I was just curious as to-
Yeah, they're, they're just the experts on the big equipment that we're not.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Chair, for example, we, we are in charge of purchasing and trading and cycling through the sheriff's vehicles as well. And so, you know, we're in charge of auctioning stuff off and all that. And also, when it comes to purchasing those vehicles, and Kerry handles all this stuff. You know, sheriff's deputy vehicle, you know, costs ninety thousand dollars. And then less than half of that cost is the cost of the car. The bulk of it is the equipment that goes in it. You know, pursuit vehicles and et cetera like that. So where Public Works, I understand, because they have heavy equipment and this kind of thing, one of the, you know, we manage other fleets as well and, that have little or no relation to General Services proper. You know, it's part of what we do. And we inherited that and I, you know, I'm, we do it.
Excellent.
So you have like two point five million in vehicles over here, but then you have a vehicle replacement plan of three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yes, so, yes, honor-
Sarah, you have the most convoluted budget we've seen so far.
Yeah, so we work off a point system on replacement for the sheriffs. And then that three hundred and fifty thousand is in case one is wrecked in that time period. We have reserved to replace that instead of working off our overall budget.
So it's essentially like two pots of money. So there's a pot of money for true just replacements. And then in a given year, there'll be X amount of damaged vehicles that that three hundred and fifty goes towards.
Case the sheriff gets in a wreck. So this two point five, these are all new vehicles we are buying?
Based off the point system that was developed years ago and handed to us. And we simply, Kerry and I go down that list and say, okay, these are where these are at this year. This is how many we need to replace.
So then, so-
We're reevaluating some of the points. So I'm, I'm working with General Services and Deb to kind of look at that point system, reevaluate it, reassess it. We want to make sure that, so for instance, there could be a patrol vehicle with low miles that has a ton of maintenance issues. And there could be one with high miles that runs great. So we don't just want to go strictly off the point system and that criteria. So it, it needs kind of revamped, I think, and we're going to take a look at that. And we're also looking at the total number. We, we feel like we can lower that number, but we want to do it in a sustainable way so that we're not lowering it now and then just lifting it back up in, in a couple of years. So we're doing that work now.
The good news about the point system is over the course of about three years, we're all, we're going to have new vehicles throughout, hopefully reducing the cost.
So every three years, we have all new vehicles?
Pretty close. Wouldn't you say?
Well, over the last three years, we've replaced a hundred and nine vehicles. So our fleet's looking very new. But I mean, as the years go on, the miles get added, so they continue being replaced. But at the rate they've been replaced over the last three years, we can look at that now.
Okay, so it's not that every three years our goal is that there's-
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, over the course of three years, our fleet has become really new.
Lots of miles.
Yeah.
Well, we also repurpose vehicles. So for instance, if a pursuit vehicle, it no longer can be a pursuit vehicle because there's a lot of demand on that, we'll transition it to General Services and some other capacity.
Actually, one of the things that happened is several, probably three years ago, we realized how old our fleet was getting. And we had hung on to our fleet too long. And so it was aging out and ended up costing us a lot more money in repairs and end of life.
Yeah, for years, it was five or six vehicles we were only replacing. And we went to the point system.
So there was a concerted effort to, to replace that fleet and get some newer vehicles and lower our maintenance costs. And, yeah, there was a lot of study and research done on it. And I think, I think we're in a better place today as a result of that.
I do too.
Supervisor Altringer, the point system basically is a thing that Frank could probably explain better. But it basically is age on one side and mileage. So they're two pretty static empirically, you know, observable data points. To the chairman's point, and I think Frank can attest to this, oftentimes patrol vehicles, these things aren't like other cars. They're not allowed to turn them off. They idle all day long. Once they're out in the field, they are idling constantly, which is hard on engines, really hard on them. And so the lifespan of a pursuit vehicle, because of the extreme, you know, conditions they operate in and the fact that they idle constantly, like that heat, electrical energy, fuel emissions build up, all the other things, friction, friction at a low RPM is very difficult on internal combustion engines. Hence, it, it, they have to be addressed more frequently.
You mentioned how many full-time employees we have, a hundred and four. I'm curious, how many buildings do you?
One hundred and two.
A hundred and two buildings?
A hundred and two buildings. Often, this building? Or we have twenty-seven courthouses and seventy-five group homes. That we're in charge of all the physical, structural-
Twenty-seven buildings on your end, but then seventy-five group homes, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And what, and how many courthouses?
Well, it's all, every property the county owns. It's the, the, the Justice Center, the Juvenile Detention Center, the Ceremonial Courthouse. Are there any more, Ralph? And the Criminal Building, right. Those are the court, that's, that's, those are the courts buildings. We have seven senior centers throughout the county. And then we have administration buildings like this and, and et cetera and et cetera. So it all adds up to twenty-seven. I mean, we have sandersheds and, and we've got, you know, buildings out in the county that, you know, we maintain and that kind of thing. So it's twenty-seven regular county structures like this one. It's a different kind of challenge because persons with intellectual disabilities reside in those homes. And we do our best to make sure their living conditions are as we would want them for ourselves. However, maintenance issues at homes where persons with developmental disabilities are, are living sometimes are under a little more pressure. And so we have to go in and maintain them a little more frequently than we would say your house.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sir?
Scott, thank you. I, I think, I think you've covered your budget well. And if we have any other questions, we'll, we'll get with you. But appreciate the work you and your team do all the time to keep us, keep us running.
I appreciate that, sir, and I'll pass that along with the team that makes it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Well, they softened, they softened us up for you, Scott.
Yes. Yes, I always appreciate that. Whatever you'd like, yeah. If I get jammed up, I'll let you know, so. Good morning, Eric Cool from Community Family and Youth Services. And if I could, I'd take, like to take just a moment to introduce some of our administration team who are here today. And my glasses broke on the way over, so apologies to any of you. Doug Stodgill is on the left here. If you could put your hand in the air. He is one of our program administrators over Subfoods, Food Pantry, General Assistance and Family Enrichment Center. Connie McGough Kaufman beside him is our supervisor for General Assistance. Mike Meyer behind them is our supervisor for Supplemental Foods. Dan Larson runs our Juvenile Detention Center, a huge operation, very well run. Moxy Seska is our newest administration team member. He's going to be leading our Global Neighbors operations. And Deputy Director Joy Ali, of course, who does and knows everything.
Sam.
That is Sam, where's Sam at? Oh, I'm sorry. And Sam, Sam McCrory, who's our program manager for all of our congregate meal sites. Also a very big job. I'm sorry, Sam, I thought you were over there. Okay. This is just high-level overview of our budget, estimated revenue and expenses. You can see here that revenue is expected to cover about twenty percent of our expenses. Most of that revenue comes from Health and Human Services, Iowa Department of Education and the Attorney General's Office Crime Victims Assistance Division. Our revenue decrease, actually, I'm going to give you an increase first, the Mid-Iowa SART increase. We were getting those payments pretty inconsistently for a long time. But Sarah and Joy worked together to work with the hospitals to get us more regular and predictable transfer of funds. And those funds go to paying standby costs for our nurses that respond for acute sexual assault responses, examinations, rape kits. Our decrease there for detention, what I'm providing there is a conservative estimate. We usually use our prior year receipts to project upcoming year receipts. But last year was uniquely high. It was over one point six million dollars. For context, three years earlier, it was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think last year was probably artificially high. Further, the revenue we get is based on a formula from a pot from the state that is distributed to all the detention centers. And that's based on expenses. Scott County has recently gone through a pretty significant expansion. So those expansion costs and those increased operational costs will give them a bigger pot or a bigger piece of that pot. So I'm giving you what I believe is a conservative, but probably a fair estimate on revenue. Expense requests, a couple of things I want to point out on this page. Decat recalculation, that shows a seventy-one percent increase in expenses. That is a budget-neutral item. We get that covered one hundred percent. All expenses through Decat are covered one hundred percent from Iowa HHS. Essentially, we had the revenue accounted for in our budget for our resource allocation this year, but the matching expense was not allocated. So we're just basically correcting that, but it is budget-neutral. Increased food costs, Meals on Wheels, that's a contractual increase. I wish I could take credit for a five million dollar decrease in expenses, but I can't. That was just money parked in my budget. It was never under our control, ARPA funds that have been repurposed. Decision packages, I'll go ahead and move to that next page unless anyone has any questions. So the first decision package is Global Neighbor Staffing. So we've always had an idea of staffing that was necessary to run the Global Neighbor's building. And so that would account for public hours, vacancy factor, safety issues, programming issues. We just didn't build those in, in prior years because we didn't have a physical space or operation where they would go. We didn't need them at the time. So this is really completing the staffing package that we always knew we would, we would feel we needed to recommend. I would say that that shows a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fiscal impact. But we have been continuing to look at opportunities to reduce that. And we have identified two positions with CFYS that through attrition, we feel we can take off the books and then offset that impact by about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the net impact would be about one hundred and eight thousand dollars for that year. Additionally, if those positions do come open soon, we won't fill those probably until the second half of next fiscal year. So that will provide one-time savings as well. Any questions on the Global Neighbors?
Yeah, when is that, I, I know they're in demo right now. If everything stays on schedule, do we see a late summer opening or summer?
I, Ma, is it fair to say early two thousand twenty-six?
Yeah, probably late, 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 five, six.
Okay.
Yeah. So those positions, if approved, will be vacant for the first half of the year.
Okay. And so likely, when would they come on then, in the fall?
Yeah, we'd probably post them. Once we, we were to the point where General Services felt they were ready to hand over the building for operations, projecting six to eight weeks ahead, we'd get that posted and start hiring.
But this decision package is going to go from two seventy-five, because of the two net positions, you'll reduce it by a hundred and sixty-seven to about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
That's, that, the net fiscal impact is that. So we don't know when those positions will come open. Both of them could come open in the next month.
Okay.
But we'd like to do it by attrition, which is why we're asking for those positions in a decision package. But then later, when those positions open, it may be next month, it may be sometime down the future. We just won't fill those. So the net impact will be only a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, that's helpful.
General Assistance Shelter. So we have a line item in our budget that allows for emergency sheltering hotels. And we use that historically pretty infrequently. Short duration for really one-off situations of people who are unhoused, vulnerable, can't go to shelter for various reasons. For example, one way we use it is for displacement events. So there's a fire or a flood at a low-income housing apartment building. Generally, the Red Cross will help those folks and give them assistance. But there's some people who won't qualify for their assistance and there's some incidents that they don't cover. So then we get called to do some problem solving. Sometimes that problem solving requires us to put them in a hotel for a night or two because these are very low-income people, very vulnerable. They don't have the financial resources. They sometimes don't have the friends or family, like a lot of us do, to have somewhere to go at midnight. So we will sometimes put them up for a night or two nights and we'll explain to them, you have a couple of days here to try to find yourself a plan. At the end of that plan, sometimes they end up going to shelter because this can't be something we sustain forever. But that's one way we use that line item. Another way is sometimes throughout the year, we will get called from, calls from various agencies that will be aware of a disabled or medically or otherwise vulnerable resident who can't go to shelter. For example, last week I got a call from Behavioral Health and Disability Services. They had been contacted by a woman in a wheelchair. She was not able to go to shelter. They couldn't meet her needs. She couldn't take care of her needs in that setting. We staffed it with a shelter. We confirmed she can't go there. So I put her up because we were in the extreme temperature plan activation at the time. So we do that sometimes a few times a year. My department assesses all of those one-off situations and we apply a pretty high standard to it. We don't talk about it very much. We don't publicize it because this kind of thing gets out pretty quickly. And then there's a false expectation from lots of vulnerable people who have legitimate needs that they might qualify for this or that this is a service that can go on for a long time and it just isn't meant to be that way. So we really try to be really responsible and not create an expectation and also be responsible for our budget. When it comes to families, Primary Healthcare does that assessment. So a family becomes homeless, unsheltered. They're going to be on the streets with young children. They call Primary Healthcare during the day or two-one-one in the evening. And there's some immediate triage that goes on. Do you have any friends? Do you have any family? Do you have any revenue, any, any income? Do you have a car? And if there are simply no options, they are authorized to put a family in a hotel overnight. And then they keep working on options. So historically, we've had expenditures for this service of about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars a year. But that was when the family waitlist was fifteen to twenty-five on the waitlist. So now, fast forward in the last year, we have a hundred and forty on the waitlist, a hundred and fifty on the waitlist. And so you can imagine that the number of families that have, don't, don't have any options, you know, like the waitlist has gone up six to ten percent. The number of families that have zero options has gone up about the same amount. So that has really taken off this fall. It went up a little bit last fiscal year, but remained within our allocation. This fiscal year, it has blown right past it. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. That the projection I'm showing you is a projection for this year, asking you to consider if you want to allocate that amount for next year. And I just didn't feel like I should make arbitrary decisions to restrict it, which would probably result in families with children sleeping outside in unsafe conditions. I didn't feel like I should make that without bringing that to your attention. So we have continued to authorize those, continued to work with Primary Healthcare to apply that very strictly, to keep working on finding alternatives, but there just aren't sometimes.
So, so what we're really talking about is very short-term shelter, which then is followed up by some specific case management to try to move them into permanency as a family as quickly as possible.
Yeah, it's meant to be short, but it has gotten longer.
Yeah.
And, and that's really the bulk of our, our expense increase. There have certainly been more families, but the duration has been longer.
Yeah. And, and consistently, we're seeing that's the greatest need that is unmet in our unhoused population is family shelter. So, so this is, this is something we've got to work on.
Yes, and, and, you know, Sarah's working hard and, and some others in the county are working hard trying to expand some housing opportunities. And those will be very important. They absolutely are desperately needed, but they probably won't be enough to address this issue.
Thank you.
Finally, the Wesley Life rate increase. So we did a competitive RFP in twenty-two for congregate meals for seniors for last year, this fiscal year, and then future years. And Wesley Life won that contract and they had set a three-year solid rate. And since then, they have found that food prices have gone up pretty dramatically and they are taking a loss right now, are probably unable to continue into next fiscal year without a rate increase. So we had some margin between the contract amount and our allocation. So we don't need to increase the full amount that they requested. But that fifty-seven thousand dollars does account for a higher rate that is no higher than our only other bidder bid two years ago. And it also allows us just a little wiggle room for increased numbers since we have seen a little bit of increase in our senior participation.
And, and so this additional fifty-seven will take us through the end of twenty-six or we'll need to add to it in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven?
This would get us through next- This would get us through next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay.
Wesley Life is going to propose rates for the next few years because our contract does allow for amendments to extend that up to, I think, two thousand twenty-nine. They have indicated they feel like the sticker shock on that is going to be pretty high. So if they submit a rate to us this year for twenty-seven, twenty-eight and beyond that we feel may not be competitive, then I anticipate re-releasing it for public bid next year, just to make sure we can test the market, make sure we're getting the best rate. But I do feel pretty good about the rate they're offering now. I don't love a mid-contract rate increase, but it's not higher than our only other bid or two years ago. So I feel like it's probably competitive. Moving on, so I'm just going to give some highlights on operations. And if you have any questions, please jump in. General Assistance, we've seen ten thousand five hundred applications this year. Our approval rate is down. It's been down for several years. We're finding that people simply do not have any income or don't have sufficient income to sustain in their current housing situation. So we would be paying their rent, and they would immediately get evicted anyway. And then that obviously reduces the amount of assistance available for those who can sustain in their current living situation. Adult Services, you can see all the numbers here. Our paratransit riders are about the same. They have not changed dramatically. Senior Living Cabs continue to be very popular. And the Meals on Wheels, that fills a gap for seniors and disabled adults where other funding sources will not cover them. Property Tax Suspension, you can see we have twenty, two hundred and twenty-two participants. That's both state and county. The county participants have to meet our county standards. And you can see from these numbers here that these are not folks who have significant income. So taking their property tax bill off of their, their burden, it really frees up money for basic needs. Senior Services, we run fifteen sites, seven are county sites, the others are municipal sites. Our Congregate Meal Participants, it's about the same number, but the actual meals served have gone up. So about the same number, or maybe slightly fewer seniors, but coming more regularly. Our Exercise Classes, our Foot and Blood Pressure Clinics remain very popular, and they have significant value. Please mark your calendar for Senior Fest on May twenty-first at the Fairgrounds. It's a very popular event. And I anticipate you'll all want to serve food and meet your senior constituents. Two things to point out here is Crown Point in Johnston has been closed for most of the last year for renovations. We anticipate that opening the spring. The Grimes location is uncertain. We're currently in a building that the seat of Grimes anticipates demolishing at some point. And it sounds like they have not identified a location for our operations. So whether we continue in Grimes or not is kind of in their court, I guess, to see what their plans are going to come up with. Community and Evening Meals, we've seen a pretty significant drop in access and utilization. At one point, we were serving seventy-five or eighty evening meals a day, three times a week at West and South. And now they're, they're down to about thirty-five. So about thirty or thirty-five at the four sites we serve. And then, of course, we offer senior outreach counseling for rent reimbursement application assistance and senior health insurance information. Supplemental Foods, this is for low-income seniors. They get a monthly food allocation either through shopping in our store or home delivery. This is for low-income seniors at a hundred and thirty percent of federal poverty and lower. We consistently have good numbers there. It was a difficult year in terms of some nationwide inventory disruptions that we thought at some point might mean we would have to close shop for a period of time. And also, they gave us a reduced caseload halfway through the year that was retroactive to the beginning of the year. So it was, Mike and Doug just did a really good job of balancing that. We made it through the year without any disruption. Food Pantries, you can see the numbers here. We went to North Pantry part-time last spring. Numbers are up as they are everywhere. And that's including the individuals we serve and the amount of food that goes out.
So do you think that going part-time has made a significant impact?
We, so we, yes, I think what helped us, and I don't think it had a negative impact on the community. And we did tracking of time and traffic for a number of months beforehand. And we just determined there's very, first of all, the numbers were very low. They still are very low. But at the beginning of the day and the end of the day, there was hardly any traffic. And so we modified hours so that we could, in fact, that's one that allows us to free up one position for Global Neighbors. So we're in the middle of the day. There's a really fierce advocate from the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, a senior. And if you ever need an ally, she's the one to call. And she was really concerned, for the principle of it partially, for losing services in a neighborhood that she cares about.
Right.
So that was a really big deal. We were also concerned about people who might need to come at the end or beginning of the day. And so we were really cognizant about catching those people and helping them identify other nearby places where they could get food. And then we tracked it, and we listened, and we paid attention for a number of months afterwards. And we simply didn't hear of anyone having a hardship because of the reduced hours.
One other question to back up a minute. On the community evening meals, in the beginning, and for a long time, it was very popular.
Yes.
It's obviously shrink.
Yes.
Substantial. Are we still thinking we need to do that service? I realize thirty-five meals is thirty-five meals, but when do we say enough?
I think it's a fair question. And I don't know that we are getting at the food insecure people that we thought we would. And we've done outreach, and we've tried to get to neighborhoods and churches and apartment buildings to see if we can identify people who might be struggling. And really, what we're getting mostly, not entirely, but mostly, is seniors who are still there at the end of the day, after their lunch. And I wouldn't say they're, you know, I'm not, I don't want to minimize their situations. I would just say they're not probably struggling as much as people that we might have felt would be visiting when we started this program.
I'm hoping it's going to be families that needed, needed the meal.
We don't see many families.
Right.
Yeah. Sam has done a good job in particular. I know for Central, he really did a lot of outreach trying to get some families from that King Irving neighborhood and, and Mondamon, and, and just was not really able to get consistent traffic for low-income families.
Lot of seniors that just stay over, Sam?
Typically, that's what it is. When we first started years ago, we did have a number of families that were in the housing complex right next to Central.
Yeah.
Well-built. We had a lot of families that were coming through there. And then the neighborhood has just changed over in the last five, ten years that we don't have as many single families there anymore. So we don't have any kids. We just, mostly it's just the seniors that are hanging out in the center, staying over to grab a meal.
Justice League of Food has done a really nice job with that contract. So I don't think it has anything to do with the food. They've been really good to work with. We just have consistently seen a pretty significant decrease. And I think it's a fair question to ask.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, I think it's C-F-O-M that has meals for families?
Children and Family Urban Mission.
Yeah.
I can't tell you for sure, but there are, about that agency in particular. But there are, in fact, we've asked that very question pretty much every year and asked ourselves, if we stop providing these services, what are some other hot meal or pantry options in those same areas? And I don't know that we've done it in the last six months, but we have had the conversation, identified that, and could share that information with our regular attendees if that's the decision that's made.
I don't know if they, if they serve meals every day, or if we could join forces with them or get the word out with that organization that they can come to our spot or?
Let me, let me investigate what they do. I'm just not familiar with it. I know it's a really good organization.
It is.
I'm just not familiar with that program, and I'll find out.
All right.
Child and Adult Care Food Program. So this is a program that provides training on providing healthy foods for children in in-home daycare centers. It's about, you know, putting healthy food into little bodies for, you know, positive development, brain development, body development, childhood BCD considerations. But it also provides really good supplemental revenue for small businesses, daycare centers. It helps with the community viability. So you can see here, an average provider would earn seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars in reimbursement for food that they're going to provide anyway. So essentially, it functions as revenue. It's a very good program. Family Enrichment Center, this is a family development and self-sufficiency program. Comes down through Health and Human Services. We have case managers that work with families who are receiving public benefits, financial, I'm sorry, Family Investment Program. And we're trying to work into a place of self-sufficiency. It's not an easy task. It's not an easy project for some of these families. They have a lot of barriers. Our case managers work closely with them to try to get them to a point where they can reduce their, their compliance, or their reliance on public benefits and come to a place of self-sufficiency. That's good for them. It's good for their dignity, obviously. Sixty-one percent of families that exit have increased their income from intake. That may not sound great, but it actually is pretty remarkable improvement. Crisis and Advocacy continues to provide really difficult and important support for people who have gone through some of the worst moments of their lives. They respond to hospitals for sexual assault examinations. And they also provide ongoing advocacy for those individuals, as well as support families of homicide survivors. Couple of years ago, we were having a really difficult time having our sexual assault response calendar filled. We were able to increase the standby pay. The state has since also increased their response pay. And we're really doing a pretty good job and haven't had any gaps on, on responses to hospitals. Youth Services, you know, we are the biggest detention center in the state, the best-run detention center in the state. Thank you to Dan and Tony and all the team leaders. They do a fantastic job. Daily Population is right at our staffed capacity. But we do still frequently have people and kids, kids out of county at other detention centers. So we might have times when we're low, but we have other times when we're at capacity, and we need to move them out. Or we might have co-offenders on the same, in the same area, or co-offenders and victims or gang conflicts. And sometimes, we just need to separate people for that reason as well. Impact Program continues to provide supervision for kids that the court allows to go home on a trial basis. We calculate that based on days when we are full, kids who are in impact. And that would, that would have required other four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of care and keep expenses if we weren't supervising them in the community. We also started some years ago Trauma Services. It was really unique in the United States. We couldn't find another program like it, but was based on the general understanding that youth involved in the juvenile delinquency system have experienced trauma. So we wanted to give them support. That's advantageous to us because it helps keep a more peaceful environment where we have some really high-risk offenders, and we have some younger, lower-risk offenders. And trying to keep, you know, the peace is really important. But through those studies, we've determined that forty-seven percent of the kids we've seen have scored as severe on the PTSD scale. And that measures categories such as emotional, physical and sexual abuse, neglect, domestic violence, substance abuse, parental incarceration, separation.
Eric, can you talk about your staffing challenges and how you're dealing with staffing as it relates to the juvenile detention? And, you know, some of the challenges you've had with recruiting, retention, turnover?
Staffing has been, Dan is almost an HR specialist at this point. It's almost all they do is they hire. Since two thousand twenty, we have lost forty-four percent of our staff. So forty-four percent of our staff that were there in two thousand twenty are no longer there. That's pretty remarkable for a place that typically had people that worked ten, fifteen, twenty years. So we've had a lot of turnover, especially the new staff. So we still have some really outstanding team leaders and senior staff. But there's just a constant churn of new staff that are there between one and two years. Some come, and they, some we hire, they don't show up the first day. Some, they come the first day and they never come back. And some come three months. We've done some things that we think are helpful. We've gotten duress buttons, which the board approved and General Services arranged. So that is to help increase safety and responses. These are very volatile kids, so the faster they can get support, the more safe they feel. We, this, this board added to staff a number of years ago, so we could overstaff a little bit to account for periods of absences. I don't think it had an increase in our budget because we always have absences. But it does help us ensure we have enough people on every shift to operate safely. That being said, it's still a detention center. It's a very rigid environment. It's locked. It's twenty-four-seven. You have mandated overtime, and that, that's not awesome for everybody. And, and so.
How about the phones? Did we get the phone handled where there's, you know, dead zones and all of that?
For the most part, I, I think they're still monitoring it. It's definitely better than it was even a few months ago. Dan, anything else to add to that? Yeah. Much better. Financial Empowerment Center, this is a program we started in two thousand twenty. Free financial counseling for all Polk County residents. This is, this is a program that is a singular investment that has fingers of influence and benefit to so many populations, areas of community priorities and programs. So, you know, this program touches reentry and people working off of, off of public benefits programs. And we've been out to the jail. We're about to start working with the county attorney's office for people who are being violated for struggling with their payment plans, housing, Des Moines Housing Authority. It just touches a number of agencies and really has impact on a lot of people. And you can see that in the four years, we've helped people reduce debt by over five million dollars and increase savings by over eight hundred thousand dollars. Also, people are clearing up debt, you know, debt collectors and overdue accounts. And that just has some sort of effect on people where they feel like this anchor that has been dragging them. It gives them some relief and some optimism for moving forward. Global Neighbors, I don't know that we need to spend a ton of time on this, other than they're working on the building. We hope to operate sometime at the end of this calendar year or beginning of next calendar year. In the meantime, Ma, and Stephanie and Joy are doing great work trying to continue to develop collaborations between ethnic, community-based organizations and then these really important events such as World Refugee Day and the Iowa Refugee Summit. We also, of course, have a role in emergency response for Mass Care and Human Services. Real quickly, we just had a couple deployments this year. But we also added this year the option to open a warming or cooling center at River Place during extreme temperature plan activation. We have not had to do that yet. We don't plan to do it very often, hopefully very seldom. But we are ready in case that is needed. Just a footnote here, the board also allocates funding for Central Iowa Services and Shelter, Families Forward, Catholic Charities, CFI Domestic Violence Program, Primary Healthcare, and Homeward. So all kind of involved in those emergency responses and people who are unsheltered. Upcoming, of course, we're working on starting operations with the Welcome Center. I will be putting a contract amendment before the board, probably in April, for that Wesley Life contract rate increase. We are looking for opportunities to reengage with the Food Bank of Iowa and hopefully improve our operations at our food pantries. And then this is the year when we wrap up our emergency rental assistance activities. Long-term, what we're monitoring is, in two thousand twenty-three, Health and Human Services came out with a Service Delivery and Alignment Assessment, which talks about some collaborations and catchment areas and combining of currently separated services, which could impact Polk County in that it could ask for entities to run more programs in a multi-county area or subcontract with another entity that would do the same. And those would both be pretty serious changes to our operations. And that's all I have.
Erica, just, just one thing, if you would add this to your list for potential monitoring and upcoming opportunities. You know, we implemented this class comp study across the board. And I want to see if it's having any impact as it relates to your turnover rate at Youth Services and try to determine if, if in fact, we're missing the boat as it relates to our pay scale. Or if we're, you know, because, because as you, as you say, forty percent turnover since two thousand twenty in a system that used to retain long-term employees, is, is, is it, is it a compensation issue? I understand it's a twenty-four-seven, it's a locked facility. I understand the risk and the assessment. Youth that you're dealing with have violent tendencies. But I really want to get into the turnover rate. And I want to try to determine, are we, is it, is it a wage issue? Is it a management issue? What, what is it that we're, we're studying? And, and do we have a plan going forward? And I'm really challenging a couple folks that have seen some higher turnover rates to start working on a, an active plan. Because each one of those people that turn over has a cost associated with them. Every year of people we lose that walk out the door, there's an institutional cost of loss of, of talent. So I just, I want to see us really drill down into that. So that would be my challenge for you.
Eric, I'm sure some of these federal mandates that might be. Eric, I'm sure some of these federal mandates that might be lost on us, have you had a chance to review some of those?
Yeah, I did. Sarah had forwarded some information from our federal lobbyists. We've had our department, administrators reaching out to our funders and Health and Human Services, Department of Ed, and the Attorney General's Office to see what the impact was. The only feedback we've gotten so far was from the Attorney General's Office, which said, you know, proceed as usual. It was, it was a day of uncertainty and, and crisis, for sure, as everyone tried to understand what it meant.
Right.
We have, well, 20% of our budget depends on funds, and most of that is federal. And-
20%?
20% of our budget is, is grants, fads and supplemental foods and Title III and all of that. So trying to understand what it meant, and do we, do we still have an expectation that if we continue operations and accrue expenses, they will be reimbursed, which has generally been the understanding in prior governmental shutdowns or funding gaps. But no one really knows. So we're staying in close touch with that. I know that there was a court order that put a stay on that executive order for a week, and so we have a week to continue digging into that.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of uncertainty right now.
Yeah.
One last thing, Eric, I was lobbied hard the other evening by a senior citizen that would like to have a, a power charging setup at the senior centers for phones. Apparently, they have a lot of phones that die, and they need their phones, and they need their iPads, and they need their laptops. And so they, they wondered, is there, is there any effort to try to address how they charge their, their, their electronics at the senior centers?
I don't know, I, I haven't heard that. But Sam and I will definitely talk about it and see what our options are. And it may be as easy as plugging an extension cord in with a, with a number of ports. But we'll certainly look into that.
I think they need, I think they need it, apparently, so.
Yeah, okay. Using technology is good, though.
Thank you, yes. They're wired. All right, so that, that wraps things up for today. Next Tuesday, we'll be working with the Treasurer's Office and then Behavioral Health for their budget, so.